Good evening and welcome to the August 21st Regular City Council. Right now, I'd like to welcome Pastor Jerry Diakoury from Crab Apple First Baptist Church to give us the invocation.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for the day that you've made and for all of its opportunities. We bless your name because you're worthy. And Lord, we thank you for those who serve our community in this important role and function. And I pray that you continue to give wisdom and direction to them in all the matters that they encounter. We pray for our community, that you continue to bless it. And Lord, for those who serve out on the front lines as first responders, we're just grateful for what you've provided for us and continue to do. Now, we ask your presence to be in this meeting at this time, that you would guide the discussion, may it be glorifying to you and edifying to all of us, for it's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council from Monday, August 21st, 2017, to order. Will the city clerk please call roll and make general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the August 21st, 2017, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment, either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you're required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that the individual has filed a notarized affidavit with the city clerk, that they have the authority to speak on behalf of that organization prior to the beginning of the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Councilmember Matt Koontz, Councilmember Bill Luss, Mayor Pro Tem Rick Moore, Councilmember Bert Hewitt, for the record, Mayor Joe Lockwood, Councilmember Karen Thurman are absent, and Councilmember Joe Longoria is here. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome again. Will the city clerk please sound the next item?
Our next item is approval of the meeting agenda, Agenda Item Number 17208.
Do we have any additions or changes to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion in a second?
Remove in a second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, that's unanimous. The next item is public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from the council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember that this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphones stating your name and address for the record. You all five minutes for remarks. Are there any general public comments?
We do not have any, sir. None. None.
None, okay, thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, will the city clerk sound the items?
First item is approval of the August 2nd, 2017, special called City Council Meeting Minutes, Agenda Item Number 17209. Approval of the August 7th, 2017, Regular City Council Meeting Minutes, Agenda Item Number 17210. Next is approval of the financial statements and investment report for the period ending July 2017, Agenda Item Number 17211. Next is approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the Fulton County Board of Education and the City of Milton for a five-year agreement to use Birmingham Falls Elementary School for recreational purposes, Agenda Item Number 17212. Next is approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the Fulton County Board of Education and the City of Milton for a five-year agreement to use Cogburn Woods Elementary School for recreational purposes, Agenda Item Number 17213. And next is approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the Fulton County Board of Education and the City of Milton for a five-year agreement to use Hopewell Middle School for recreational purposes, Agenda Item Number 17214, our seventh and final consent agenda item this evening, is approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Prime Contractors, Inc., for the renovation of the police and court facilities, Agenda Item Number 17215.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as prepared by staff.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that is unanimous. We have no reports or presentations. Moving on to first presentation, will the city clerk please sound those items?
First item is consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter 50, subdivisions of the City Code, Section 50-186F, construction activities restricted to certain hours, Agenda Item Number 17216. And next is consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter 10, Buildings and Building Regulations of the City Code, Section 1097, construction activities restricted to certain hours, Agenda Item Number 17217.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'll approve the, make a motion to approve the reading of the first presentation.
Second motion.
Okay, we have motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Okay, that passes unanimously. Moving on to our public hearing, will the city clerk please sound the item?
This is consideration of a resolution transmitting a draft capital improvements element relating to the city's impact fee program to the Atlanta Regional Commission for regional and state review, Agenda Item Number 17218. This was discussed at the August 14th City Council Work Session. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and members of the city council. This public hearing requirement is part of the transmittal process. Later this evening, we'll be asking you to vote to transmit the so-called capital improvement element, which is essentially a financial report, reporting to the state on our impact fees in terms of the amount we collected, the amount that has been dispersed and/or encumbered. And this is for fiscal year 16, which is last year. And so, this public hearing is part of this transmittal requirement.
Sudi, do we have any public comments?
We do not, sir.
Okay, is there any council discussion? Okay. Hearing none. There are no items under the zoning agenda or unfinished business, so we'll move on to the new business. Will the city clerk please sound the first item?
Our first item is consideration of a resolution transmitting a draft capital improvements element relating to the city's impact fee program to the Atlanta Regional Commission for regional and state review, Agenda Item Number 17218. This was discussed at August 14th, 2017, City Council Meeting. The public hearing was held this evening, August 21st. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. This is a transmittal resolution to send our capital improvement element report on to ARC and the state where it will be reviewed, and then subsequent to their review, it will come back to you all for your final approval at that time.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item 17218. Second.
Okay, is there any council discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Okay, that's unanimous. Will the city clerk please sound the next new business item?
The next item is consideration of lifting the moratorium on the acceptance of applications for concept plan approval and applications and issuance of land disturbance permits for property located in the Crab Apple Form-Based Code that is adjacent to the boundaries of the Crab Apple Form-Based Code District, Agenda Item Number 17219. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, you have on this agenda this evening, potential lifting of the moratorium placed on applications for concept plan approval and applications for issuance of LDPs on properties located within the Crab Apple Form-Based Code that are adjacent to the boundaries of that designated area. This is a moratorium that was placed on LDPs and concept plan applications in June 21st of 2017. We then had a public hearing on July 24th, 2017, to extend it. We are in the middle of this moratorium right now. The moratorium right now will end per rule or automatically on either November 21st of this year, approval of any amendments to the Crab Apple Form-Based Code following requisite hearings, or if the council extends the moratorium further. Now, those are automatic terminations of this moratorium. The city council always has the right, upon affirmative action of a majority of a quorum, to terminate the moratorium at any time, and that is what is on the agenda this evening. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, this is to the council for its determination.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any discussion on this? Do we have public comment?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay.
Our first speaker is Mr. John Bowles.
I have two comment cards that were turned in late. Is it okay for me to get these two?
To the city clerk?
Thank you.
Yes.
And thank you for that special consideration. My name is John Bowles, and I live at 2010 Knightsbridge Way in Alpharetta, Georgia, adjacent to the property at 12455 Broadwell. I'm not going to attempt to argue points of law tonight. I simply want to request that this council addresses what should be obvious to all, and also to address what the right thing to do would be. So many problems and issues can be addressed and solved by simply addressing the questions. What is obvious? And then, what's the right thing to do? This item was put on the council's agenda in the last few days to be discussed tonight. And was it not for, or were it not for, a diligent, observant individual who is in our neighborhood, this could have been brought up for discussion and possible action without any notification from hardly any of us that are adjacent to it in Alpharetta, or the people across the street who are, have already expressed on numerous occasions several issues and problems with this action. But thankfully, he found it in the middle of Page Four in tonight's agenda. The lack of notification resulted in several directly affected neighbors not being able to attend this meeting tonight and to express their concerns because they planned trips out of town. A month ago, this moratorium was put in place so you would be able to address the intent of the Form-Based Code and make changes that might need to be made. Now, it's obvious from the 120-day moratorium that there were concerns, that potential problems were needing to be addressed, or else you wouldn't have given the 120-day moratorium on it. Your own city attorney challenged you that during the moratorium, you should conduct a comprehensive study and to determine how problems and issues with the code should be addressed. And now, tonight, we're considering this to kind of go ahead and approve something that might not meet the rules and regulations that will be in effect in another 60 days. And it's almost as if it's being, someone's asking to address this quickly because in 60 days, it might not pass the rules and regulations that would be in place at that time. So I'm going to ask you, is that the right thing to do? We've requested, and I'm going to request again, a meeting with decision-makers in Milton so that we can sit down and express the issues and problems both sides would have with this, so that we can understand where everyone's coming from to replace this five-minute, one-way bill that is difficult on all of us. We've also written letters to the city, a letter filled with questions that has not been addressed, and that letter was sent on July 18th. We've requested, and I'm requesting again, that we be able to meet at your time and place. When this council voted seven to nothing, seven zero, to impose a 120-day moratorium, we all felt the moratorium was imposed because there was a feeling by this council that there could be problems in the code that needed to be addressed. Again, if not, why the 120-day moratorium? The property that some seem to feel should be grandfathered in has yet to have a proposal, as far as we know, submitted that is in concert with the rules and regulations that are in place right now. And they're asking for additional variances to that. So it's also obvious that unless something new has happened in the last couple of days, a compliant plan has still not been issued. This council approved a 100-day moratorium to allow you to study the code and determine what should be done about the proposals that seem to not be very neighborly, and to determine what should be done to treat all parties fairly. If this meeting has been held, and if this study has been performed, is there a copy of it for us? And, you know, how can we see that if it was done? Your Form-Based Code says that the property...
Your time is... Do you want to extend the time on this? It's been...
Is good with extended time?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much. The Form-Based Code says the property should and could have a mixture of residential and businesses, but should be primarily residential. How many saw the eclipse today? Here's the sun, here's the moon. What they're asking, or what we're being asked to believe, is that this moon has the primary surface of this sun covered like this. You know it doesn't, the builder knows it doesn't, the developer knows it doesn't, you know it doesn't, and I know it doesn't. Even when it gets here, it's still not primary. Not until we approach 70% is it primarily residential, and we're being asked to make decisions on things like that. I'm not, don't have time to address traffic, noise levels, congestion during rush hour. I just simply request that you extend the moratorium until a true study can be completed and neighborly codes can be developed and presented that can stand up to the future. And I recognize this is not intended to be a question-and-answer period, but if you've got any questions, I'll be thrilled to address them. Otherwise, thank you for giving me a little extra time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, just a point of order. Sudi, how much longer was it this gentleman spoke?
It was three minutes and 33 seconds.
Just to make sure we're consistent, would the council mind giving a motion and vote to ratify that additional time? I just want to keep us on that so we don't get yes and no in certain situations.
That we extend that time for all additional speakers.
Thank you.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Sudi?
Okay, we only have one more speaker.
Okay.
So that speaker will have eight and a half minutes. And I have eight comment cards, though, to read into the record after that speaker. The speaker is Stan Brevant.
Good evening, and thank you very much. And I will not need the eight minutes. I'll be happy to yield them to someone else. My name is Stan Brevant. I live at 12497 Danesfeld Drive, which is in the Crab Apple Crossing subdivision. Several of the homes face Broadwell Road, and then we're on the other side of that, where the little pond is and whatnot. I actually lived in another house back over on the other side of Milton High School when the City of Milton was formed. Bill, you came to my house, spoke to me, and you persuaded me to vote for incorporation of the city, and you persuaded me to vote for you, which I did, and I'm happy I did. I believe in the principles upon which this city was founded, which was to preserve the nature and character of this wonderful environment in a way that our surrounding cities have been unable or unwilling to do. I'm also a pragmatist. I understand that you have to balance the rights of the property owners, and you also have to be mindful that there's enough of a tax base so that we can afford to have good roads, good police protection and fire protection. I'm not a lawyer, I'm not an expert in city law or zoning or anything, but what I understand is that the discussion that we're having is around some parcels of land that are not in the Crab Apple Form-Based Code but are adjacent to it. And, and so there is a discussion about, was that intentional, or was that an omission when the zoning was passed? I don't know, but I do know that everybody that now lives in the City of Milton understood the philosophy of the city when it was formed, and that there would be constraints on what we could all do with our property so that we could preserve the nature of this environment, the character of our, of our city. And if these parcels should have been covered under the Form-Based Code, I would implore you to take the time to decide that. And I understand that process, and there will be additional open forums. The owners of those properties can come plead their side of the discussion, and you guys can make the decisions about whether or not that zoning should apply to them. But that's the process that I would suggest we follow, rather than allowing these developers to come in, you know, I like the eclipse analogy, but basically come in sort of in the cloak of darkness and take advantage of this loophole and put in place businesses and properties that don't maintain the character of our environment. They don't have the buffer, they don't have the parking, all the other rules that you thoughtfully put in place to preserve our nature and character. And then I believe that the second issue that's sort of up for discussion is, within the Crab Apple Form-Based Code, apparently there's some room for interpretation between, I don't know where it is, Table 8A and Table 9. I've read them all, they don't, you know, that's not my job. But if there's room for clarifying those rules so that as future decisions are made, it can be done consistently and all open and out in the open where property owners understand what their potential opportunities are for monetizing their property, that's the way that should be done as well. And I would assume there would, again, be open forums, open discussion. You guys would make the final decision as to whether or not that code needed to be clarified. But that's what I'm here to ask you to do, is take the time, figure out what's the right thing, what's the right zoning to apply to those parcels. Take the time, figure out whether or not the Form-Based Code needs to be clarified. By lifting this moratorium, which, as was pointed out earlier, you passed unanimously, including the extension, by lifting that moratorium in this way tonight, I will take it personal. I certainly would see that as an affront to my rights and my opportunity to have you thoughtfully consider what should be done with those parcels and what code should be applied and how that code should be interpreted. That's, that's, that's the way I see things. But thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, the next comments I'll read into the record. Ms. Tamara Fallhopper and Roger Bauer. We have, Tamara lives at 2040 Knightsbridge Way in Alpharetta, and Roger lives at 2020 Knightsbridge Way in Alpharetta, and they have the same comment, which is, "Please vote against lifting the moratorium for all the reasons I stated during the last city council meeting. To allow for clarification of the definition of T4 and its applicability to areas adjacent to single-family residences outside the district, to amend the code to allow for buffers, revise use, and adequately protect against noise. Also, I am out of town to see the eclipse. Alternately, please delay the vote." The next one comes from Patricia Lindquester, who is at 5095 John Quilla Drive in Alpharetta. And she states, "There is confusion about the unclear zoning in this area. Why rush to make a judgment that will be set in stone forever? Please take the time to do it right." And the next comes from Ben Myers, who is in opposition. He lives at 2050 Knightsbridge Way, Alpharetta. "In order to allow for sufficient time for the city staff and city council to study the matter at hand, I would kindly ask that the Milton City Council vote in opposition of lifting the moratorium for the reasons Tamara Fallhopper stated during a prior city council meeting, to allow for clarification of the definition of T4 and its applicability to areas adjacent to single-family residences outside the district, to amend the code to allow for buffers, revise use, and adequately protect against noise." Next is from David Lindquester at 5095 John Quilla Drive in Alpharetta. "Please vote against lifting the moratorium. What is the purpose of lifting the moratorium before further study is completed? A rushed decision now will impact our area for many, many years into the future." Next is Jeff McDaniel at 2030 Knightsbridge Way, Alpharetta, in opposition. "There is no reason to lift the moratorium that was just extended last month. Time is needed to allow for clarification of the definition and interpretation of primarily residential uses, to amend the code to allow for proper buffers to adjacent residential areas, to adequately protect against noise in transitional areas, and all the other reasons that justified the moratorium in the first place. The moratorium only impacts three properties in the City of Milton, but the impact can be great to the property values of those directly affected. My property backs up to 12455 Broadwell Road, as well as our neighbors. I urge the council to vote no on lifting the moratorium, or since so many people are out of town today, at least delay the vote." Next is from Jody Bowles at 2010 Knightsbridge Way in Alpharetta, and in opposition. "Please do not lift the moratorium until all codes have been clarified." Next is from Sally Hildebrandt, 5115 John Quilla Drive, Alpharetta, in opposition. "Do not lift moratorium until buffer has been added to the Form-Based Code." And finally, from Louis and Stephanie Fishman at 12521 Danesfield Drive in Milton, Georgia, in opposition. "This request to build this business on this property is wrong. Parking is minimal, doing away with buffer or minimize hurts the perpetual value of homes. You need to ask yourself, would you want this business in your backyard? What you are doing, what you are doing will pass legal, will not pass legal mustard, but think is a fine line between legal and doing the right thing. Please maintain the moratorium." And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Ken, just for clarification, are we looking at three parcels that were covered under this moratorium?
Mayor Pro Tem, I think that's right. I think it was three or four at most.
Okay, and are they, for clarification, my side also, are they currently zoned as part of the Form-Based Code?
They would be within the Form-Based Code, yes, the overlay, yes.
Okay, and one last question before we get into general discussion. What brought this forward as far as to, to basically lift the moratorium?
I'll address that. It was originally when you had asked a question about the moratorium, you had asked if there was any activity on any of the three or four subject properties, one of which is not the Broadwell property, because that's not subject to the moratorium. The answer at that time was no. We since learned that that was not the case. There is activity on one of the, on one of the parcels, and this, the moratorium could negatively impact that individual. We had some discussions, and it was determined generally from council that the discussion worked, it was worth merit. was worth merit here at the council level. There was an appetite to consider lifting the moratorium.
Okay. Joe?
Read on.
Yep, I just had a couple of general questions.
So we heard a couple of comments from folks, Steve, about when this item was added to the agenda. I know the rules. The agenda has to be published a week before the meeting, so, or, I think Wednesday, the previous Wednesday before the meeting, something like that. Did we follow those guidelines? Did we put this on the agenda with sufficient time for notification in our standard way of doing things?
We did.
Okay, so this wasn't added at the last minute?
No.
Didn't we give the council an option to return this to the agenda prior to November the 21st? Isn't that one of the options that we always have on any kind of a moratorium?
Well, that's, first of all, that's always the case. The council always has the right to repeal a moratorium, just based upon whether the council wants to move forward with the initiative or not. The way the moratorium reads on its face, though, is that if you had in fact modified some of the performance standards of the Crab Apple Form Based Code, it would have ended as a matter of law immediately upon you doing that. So that's true as well. And that's to one of the speakers' points, you know, and again, I don't know where the council may want to go this evening exactly, but we're sort of at a crossroads here. We're either going to take action with respect to the Crab Apple Form Based Code and give some direction to staff, or we need to lift it, one of the two, because the whole purpose of a moratorium is to maintain the status quo while the government's doing something.
And what we did do since that conversation was, Ken's office took a look at our current, our current code and how it was applied by our community development department, and determined that it was applied correctly as written in the code. That being said, going back to what Ken just said, absent anything else, staff is doing no more work on this unless, of course, council wants to see the code changed.
Right, so we had some questions when this first came up as to whether or not we had captured what it was we had said we wanted to make?
Yes.
The code, all right? There was a member of council who's not here tonight who had specifically mentioned that it seemed to be in, it was contrary to what her memory was. And we talked about that, Kathy, that night with both yourself and some other staff members, because obviously if we somehow had misdocumented what we intended, we need to fix that, we need to make that right. So the goal, my recollection of the goal of going away and doing further study was to figure out, did we capture in our code of ordinances what we intended to capture? And is the current ordinance that we have on the books the ordinance that was designed in all the meetings that we had with all the citizens where we collected input and stuff like that? Now, I believe that the answer to that question is yes, the ordinance is correct as captured, but I'll let you speak, Kathy, to anything else that you might want to add to that.
Yes, I agree with your statement that I, as the community development director, as well as the staff, feels that we have captured the intent of the ordinance as it is so written.
Okay, so, well, I'll come back to you in just a second, sorry. I got out of order here. Steve, we also had a question from someone stating that there are unanswered questions in communication that our office has received. Are you in agreement with that, or have we addressed any communication that's been received with some kind of a response?
I have pushed everything over to Ken's office because they have, there is legal representation involved at this point, so any responses along those lines are being handled through our legal arm.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right, and at this point, the attorney that, at least to my understanding, represents some of the interested stakeholders, has provided at least two letters. One is July 5th, and one is July 21st, and I have responded to both of those. So I have responded.
Okay, so as far as we know, we've responded to every communication that we've received from a question point of view.
There have been other questions that have come in, but at this point, I need Ken's office to make sure that, you know, we're not giving de facto depositions here.
Right, okay.
While there may be some type of legal wrangling going on.
Okay, all right.
And Councilmember Longoria, I can just tell you that I've, I'll say it in my place just once more for clarification. I've responded to two letters. Both of those letters were fairly thorough by the attorney that wrote and asked questions and challenged Milton, challenged Milton on a few points, and I've responded to them.
Okay. So Kathy, apologize, I jumped the gun there. I mean, the purpose of us documenting in our ordinances the lack of a buffer that would normally have been included in another Form Based Code that the city implemented was specifically because the Crab Apple area is different. It's not the Highway 9 area, it's not the Deerfield area, it's not the Birmingham Crossroads area, it's the Crab Apple area. And our goal was to make a, an area that was a walkable area. It was, it was our city center. It was the place that, it was the gathering place for folks when there was going to be something that happens in Milton. We would think of the Crab Apple area as the place to go. It was supposed to be walkable. I mean, there's a whole long list of reasons why we designed it the way we did, okay? Is it fair to say that we achieved our goals in that design and we communicated what that design, those design goals were when we had the original meetings on the Crab Apple Form Based Code?
I believe that we did, sir. You know, it's always difficult to include everything and for everyone to hear all the different viable factors, but we certainly made that our point, that it is a, the scale is very different than Deerfield, which is a much higher denser scale and height and density scale than here, and that we were creating this village. And the idea is that you have a mix of uses, and that people walk around, and it's a live and a work and a play type of environment, all within a very confined area. Like you see in the Georgetown's or the Alexander Virginias or the Charleston's, the Savannas of the world, and that's the intent.
And we don't even have to go that far, because if we just travel a little bit south and we look at the area that Alpharetta is currently building on the main street.
That's correct.
And if we go even further south into Roswell and look at the Magnolia area right there.
Kent Street.
I mean, those things are equally true there that we're trying to implement here. In other words, there's commercial property without any buffer zone between itself and a residential property with the extra parking, all targeted at achieving this walkable, capable area, the way we describe it, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so, so this, it's not like we designed some kind of Frankenstein. I mean, this is, this is well-known, this is documented elsewhere. Other cities have implemented plans such as this with great effect, I would say.
That is correct, and certainly the studies show us that this is the type of development that people want, that people want to live nearby or live within.
Right. So while it might not be obvious to everybody, there was a lot of rationale, there was a lot of research, there was a lot of study that went into this, and the fact that we've come back and said that, no, no, our code documents exactly what we intended, is meaningful.
Yes.
All right.
I think, I think Councilmember Longoria have captured my question, but I'll just put it a simple way. Your professional staff and yourself, city manager included, feel comfortable with the ordinance as it's written, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Just some clarification as well. So last time, and obviously in the spirit of being good neighbors, what we have, primary complaints that we're getting is regarding the Broadwell property, right? And so from the other three that are out there that might be affected by the moratorium, what the complainants, I guess, are trying to say is that by having the moratorium, that Broadwell property would be affected by the moratorium, right? But there is obviously a problem there because the applicant submitted it before any moratorium. So I wanted to make sure we're clear on the status of that Broadwell property is.
Right, so this was discussed, I think may have been discussed in July when we imposed the moratorium for a greater length, and I think one of these speakers got up and made very eloquent points about the fact that this moratorium should not be construed as applying to the Broadwell property. And we in fact adjusted the language of the moratorium such that it only applied to properties that had then proper applications or some variation on that language, because we were attempting to say, well, okay, if that's your position, that's fine, because that's just the law. It doesn't really matter what my opinion is or anybody else's opinion is, what the law is, is what the law is. So I was comfortable with that. Now, Councilman Coontz, to the extent you're asking me right now, is my position that that property is outside of the moratorium? Yes, that is my position. Could a court rule, a court overrule me? Sure, of course. But that is, that is my position as it stands right now, and I've attempted to make that position known to the attorney that has written two letters, and I've walked through how I got there in those correspondence.
So I'm just trying to make a statement here then based on that. So if that's the case, obviously there's a discrepancy from legality of this moratorium affecting the property that everybody has a complaint on, but we might have some collateral damages with some other properties at which no one has had any complaints on in that process if we do that. Or it may not even affect the property in the question, but it might affect other properties who are.
Well, I think, I think that's right. I mean, the last time the council discussed this, I think the council was having a concern as to whether or not it wants to shut down the entire land development process, you know, based upon a moratorium that affects three parcels. I mean, I think, I think that was at least something the council considered when it kind of gave the instruction not to undo the moratorium, but at least put it back on an agenda where we can have this very debate we're having right now.
Now, my third final question, Steve, I think we had mentioned in one of these meetings as well that there was communication that we were talking with Alpharetta, we were talking with the developer on this, but has that gone anywhere with regards to the process of development?
This specific?
This specific one on Broadwell.
All right. Well, I mean, originally, I don't want to speak off-base here, originally they were going to voluntarily put a buffer in there, and then things changed, and they didn't, they no longer had to. I don't know that any further conversations have gone on since. Kathy, has any, has there, has there been anything since, any changes to their plans?
Just the final plan that they have does show, I believe it's a 20-foot, 20 or 25-foot buffer.
So they reinstituted the 25-foot buffer?
Yeah, there is a small buffer there.
Okay.
And on the same question, Kathy, what was the original conceptual plan as far as the buffer depth?
The original conceptual plan that needed a variance was to put in a 40-foot buffer, but in order to accomplish that, they would have had to have had a variance approved to reduce the amount of parking required, which we supported because we did have them do a survey in terms of how much parking was going to be needed. So we felt comfortable with that request to reduce the amount of parking. And then it achieved the buffer, but that eventually went away, and it, well, and we also, so it went away, and so at the moment, we have a smaller buffer in there, and the parking has been achieved that is necessary. So therefore, the variance request went away as well.
Well, is the, I guess, the intent of a lot of these approvals are, or the decision-making process in approvals of these conceptual plans is a consideration of buffer depth. And it seemed to me at the time that that was probably what the adjoining property owners would have enjoyed had that been approved. And I think ultimately, that's one of the key factors in separation between uses is the depth of buffers. I guess the question is then, is that developer still willing to have that increased buffer with the condition that they do reduce the parking?
None of this time, sir. My understanding is that he felt that if he did not have to go to the BZA for the variance, that he would prefer not to have to go to the BZA. So he has made his plan work within the regulations of our ordinance.
So he is following the letter of the law?
Correct.
As it is written for the overlay.
Right.
Well, the 25-foot buffer is not, is not, is not in the, he, correct me if I'm wrong, he does not have to provide any buffer?
Correct, that's correct. And, but, but we did work with him to see to what extent we could get some type of buffer.
And just to reiterate, I think, what Councilman Coote said, this particular project we're talking about is not under the, under this moratorium.
That is my position.
Thank you. Kathy, did you have something, Joe?
Go ahead.
Kathy, you'd said that they, the applicant came forward and said that they didn't want to go before the BZA, so they didn't want to do the variance. Is there any way we can approach them again and just ask, because I think the big concern we're hearing is from the neighbors in Alpharetta saying, hey, we'd like to still see a buffer, and it sounds like going to the BZA wouldn't really be a stumbling block. And before we, I guess the question is, can you go back and actually talk to the developer one more time?
Is this for property that's included in the moratorium?
No, I'm sorry, no, it is not.
Oh, okay, yeah, so we don't need to worry about that right now, yeah.
I guess we could, that would be something maybe we take offline, but I'd like to see us go back and actually talk to them one more time and approach. Joe?
Yeah, so the last question that we were asked from folks that were giving us comments was, you know, what's the right thing to do? And I don't necessarily, I mean, trust me, I'm happy to stand up here and discuss this to whatever extent we need to. But to me, the decision becomes, have we uncovered any information or any reason for us to change the code that exists today? Because if we have, we need to extend the moratorium, and we need to figure out what that is. I'm of the opinion that we haven't discovered anything. And so to me, the right thing to do is the hard thing to do, which is lift the moratorium, okay? Because I can only think that it would be more cruel for us to put off a bad decision to a future date and tease people with the idea that we're going to change our minds. So from my point of view, I can't understand why we would consider changing our existing code, and so therefore I can't consider why we want to continue to extend the moratorium. That's me. I'd let somebody else give their opinion. But if we're there, we need to make a motion to move forward with that.
I would agree with you.
Any other discussion?
I just worry about the moratorium doesn't solve the problem that's at hand, and that's the existing property that would fall out of the realm of the moratorium. So it wouldn't be fair for the others who were following the letter of the law, but if there was a way to fix that problem, it would be a situation that, like what you talked about as well, so.
And I guess the question is, is everybody, the rest of you, still on board saying, the way the Form Based Code is written today, we're comfortable with that for the rest of the development within the city?
Yes. Okay, I just want to make sure I'm not misunderstanding. No, no, I know. But the way the code is written today, the moratorium only applies to three pieces of property. Exactly. So those three pieces of property are frozen in time, all right? Everything else is following the code the way it's written. So there's no buffer requirement on any other property, and the idea of the developer putting in a buffer is completely optional. Right. So I'm not sure what the other issue is that we're talking about, because I want to understand that. Yeah, the issue is the concern of Alpharetta residents on the Broadwell property, so that's, that's all we're talking about. Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. The property itself is within code.
The property itself is within code, but just the concern that the Alpharetta residents have.
So the, so the additional buffer that the developer wants to put in, is it sufficient? Is that what we're saying, or is it something else?
No, I'm saying, I'm saying they're within code, I'm just basically stating that the concern is that there are residents that aren't satisfied with that, they want that property to be within the moratorium, but it cannot be according to our legal counsel. So that's the idea, so we're saying the same thing.
Okay. Any more discussion?
It's past legal muster, it's past muster by community development. They don't know how we can hold it.
Okay, is there a motion that somebody would like to make?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we lift the moratorium, Agenda Item Number 17-219.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Longoria, second by Councilman Hewitt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any not in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, will the city clerk please sound the new final business item?
Our next item is consideration of the following subdivision plat approval. Sweet Apple Land Lots 1016 and 1073, Ebenezer Road, final plat, 21 lots, 38.25 total acres, .55 lots per acre. Agenda item number 17-220, Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. This is a final plat to be reviewed by all of you. This is the Sweet Apple subdivision. It's 38.25 acres, 21 lots, and the density comes out to .55 units per acre. The location, these are the two land lots, you can see them at the southwest corner of the city on Ebenezer Road, the two land lots there that comprise this subdivision. And this is the layout of the subdivision. We have in the front the rural view sheds, as well as a 10-foot trail dedication. Surrounding, on the perimeter of this subdivision is a trail network. It's hard to see, but it does go around and follow the, come alongside of the lake and come back. There is also another trail that goes around the lake as well. In addition, there is a conservation area up in the northeast sector of this plat that's been dedicated. The conservation area has already been recorded. Down at the southeast corner, this is not included in the subdivision, this is, it remains under separate ownership. And that essentially is the plat.
Okay. Kathy, off the top of your head, do you know what the average lot size is for the?
No, I don't, but the average is about two acres per lot, that's what the average comes out to.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, any other discussion?
Well, it's per acre, it may not be per lot because of course he's.
Right, and I was trying to figure out based on the land that's not dedicated to, yeah.
Right, right, so yeah, that has to come out, and you know, and I don't have, and it's, it's probably on.
It's okay, it's all right.
You know what, I would say most of them are an acre or just a little above if I look at the site plan very closely.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion in second for approval?
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item 17-220.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Hewitt, second by Councilman Longoria. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, mayor, moving on to mayor and council reports. Does anybody have anything on council they want to report on?
Yes, so on August 26, Jim Craig's not here, but he had asked if anybody wants to do a coin toss for the youth football games for the Milton Steelers at Bill Memorial Park. There are some time slots available, and they are at 11:30, you can do the eight and under, youth tackle, football team, at 1 o'clock, you can do the nine and under at 2:30, the 10 and under at 4 o'clock, the 12 and under, and at 6 o'clock, the 11 and under. So I'm doing the 10 a.m. one, which is the six-year-olds, which should be interesting. So, but those are available if you would like to schedule that, and I think we all should, because it's great to have our brand out there on the field every single Saturday.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, moving on to staff reports.
All right, ComDeb is up.
Well, we are busy, we've got lots of initiatives underway. The first one I want to talk about is the tree preservation ordinance. We've got a stakeholder meeting on Wednesday night this week on the third draft we're on. So they are working very hard on that, and I hope to soon be able to deliver it to the planning commission and then on to you all for your review and approval, hopefully. We are working on the creation of the Unified Development Code. As you know, you had a presentation on it at the workshop meeting last week. So that work will proceed over the next several months. And additionally, community development is co-partning with the Parks Department to undertake the update to the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So we've already had focus meetings last week, and thank you to all of you who attended. And then we did have two public meetings with the community, which went very well and were very well attended. We were very, very pleased with the attendance on that. Additionally, community development is going to co-partner with Public Works to work on an update to the city's trails plan, and we're going to kick that off on Friday morning. So there's lots of activity in terms of planning projects that are going on. In addition, on September the 11th, you will see the final version of the noise control ordinance, along with an ordinance that proposes limitation on construction activities restricted to certain hours. And that was a discussion that came out of our noise ordinance, so they are tracking together. You will see them both at the same time, which will be on 9/11. And that's my presentation.
Okay, how many people, I'm just curious, showed up for the Parks and Updates, the two meetings?
I would say about 40 for each, in that range. We had one here and then we had one over in Deerfield at the, our old digs, essentially. So we had a good attendance.
And will we see kind of the summary of what you guys gathered from them going forward?
Absolutely, oh, yes, yes. And we're also going to be doing a survey, too, a public survey, a statistically correct survey, and that will be going out, and so we'll be assessing the information from that survey as well.
That'll be a general survey to the whole city?
Yes, it will be sent out, I believe, to 4,000 households. It's a statistically correct to reach different groups within the city, and so that is being prepared and will be sent out shortly.
Okay, and that probably has to do with how do we want to develop the parks, what type of use, et cetera?
Yes, programs, all that stuff, yeah.
Okay, great. Noise control, when we, we had that in a prior meeting, we had a public discussion about some of the concerns with Milton High School. Have we had a chance to reach out, talk at all to board member Katie Reeves, or done any type of connection?
That's on my desk.
Okay.
And the answer is no.
Okay. Maybe we can talk afterwards, because I still would be interested in trying to make sure before we finalize something, we actually get a chance to talk to them about what's coming over, because I still continue to get, from individuals, I'll get notices about the noise and the loudness and the whatever of the school.
Before we have that meeting, Ken and I need to work something out regarding what our powers and authority are.
Okay.
And once we have that nailed down, it will be appropriate time to have that meeting.
Okay, thanks. End ballots. Okay, thank you, Kathy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of council. First this evening, I would like to present our year-to-date accident and crime statistics. I'm pleased to report that accidents overall in the city are down 8%. Personal injury, crashes are down 23% from this time last year. Part 1 crimes, down by six incidents. As you remember, last time we were fighting a trend where it was rising a bit, so we've, we're lower than we were last year, so heading in the right direction there. Part 1 crimes the last 28 days, down 46%. And year-to-date property crime, down by eight incidents. We are up two incidents in violent crime, we have an 88% clearance rate on those. As you know, we pride ourselves on a 100% clearance rate, one at all possible, and we have developed a suspect in the remaining one, so we expect very soon to maintain that 100% clearance rate on our violent crimes. I would like to share a couple of things with you, you know, workings within the PD. July 22 through the 26, I was pleased to attend the Georgia Association of Chiefs of Police Conference. I got some very good training there, and I appreciate the opportunity to have attended that training. And I always like to take a moment and brag on our explorers. Last month, they once again placed very well in a competition. Six Milton explorers traveled to the Georgia Public Safety Training Center in Forsyth, Forsyth, Georgia, to participate in the 13th Annual Law Enforcement Explorers Association State Competition. 200 explorers from 20 different law enforcement agencies attended the competition, and a total of 25 teams competed, with our explorers placing third in the active shooter exercise, second in traffic stops, and first in DUI detection. So very proud of them, that's the work that they've been doing. And just a couple of other things of note, we have a new volunteer with the police department that started, she's going to help out with some clerical duties. And we just hired a new officer, Officer Joshua Salisbury, who comes to us from Utah. And he's passed a state test and he's waiting on a couple more administrative tasks before he gets out on the road. So we're happy for, the first time in a long time, we are including our recruits in the academy, we're 100% up to staff.
Excellent.
Any questions?
No, just a comment, I think that's great with explorers program too, and also that we're continuing to recruit and actually pulling people from different places around the country. Thank you, thank you for the updating.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, chief. Steve, do you have anything else you want to add?
From the staff perspective, we are all set.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn the regular meeting.
Okay, we have a first and a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried and we are adjourned. Thank you.